Your line, Ed.
Good morning. At this time, we'll call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Thursday, November the 15th. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Klicka.
Here.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
And Chairman Ilert.
Here.
All are present, we do have a quorum. Would you join with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those present, if you have a noise-making device, would ask that you turn it to silent mode or off, so as not to interfere with our electronic communications, as all our meetings are streamed online. We do have one presentation to make this morning, we'll do so at this time. I'm going to ask Barb McEver to join me at the podium. We have a proclamation recognizing Hunger and Homeless Week, November 10, 2018, and Barb is involved with a volunteer group, Project 1020, who works with homeless, and, as I understand it, you all refurbished an existing building here in Olathe, which allows shelter on a short-term basis for those without shelter, especially in the cold weather. So, Barb, thank you very much for that effort, and if you'd like to make a couple of comments, that'll be fine.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say thanks for the acknowledgement and the recognition, and last night, I watched a couple of these proclamations on video, and I thought, oh no, I'm in trouble because they look so formal, and I'm not that way, so I think it's just best that I speak from my heart. So I want to tell you a little bit about what we've been doing. Dean Askland and I started Project 1020, the Cold Weather Shelter, in 2015. We thought, we saw a need, but we really didn't know if any of our plans would work or not. We wanted a place that was safe and warm, that didn't pass any judgment on people. The last three years, we've operated out of two Olathe churches, who were kind enough to let us use the space within their church. Project 1020 is for adults without minor children who are experiencing homelessness. In Johnson County, if you're an adult, and you don't have any minor children living with you, and you're homeless, there's no place for you to go for overnight shelter. The winter of 2015, we helped shelter seven people overnight. The next year, I think we had somewhere around 30, but during the winter of 2017 and 18, we had 79 people spend the night, different people spend the night, at the NEMA church where we were located. I just think that there's so many misconceptions about people that are in this situation, and I've learned so much from each of the people that I've met. I've learned about respect, and humanity, and humility, understanding, vulnerability, and the trust, and the distrust that some of them have, and it's completely understandable. I think if a person's basic needs aren't met, it's overwhelming and really hard to figure out how to get a job, you know, what you're going to do, how you're going to shower, how you're going to brush your teeth, how you're going to get there every day. Their most urgent concern is just where they're going to sleep for the night, or where they're going to get anything to eat. They're worried about their stuff. They've got all their stuff with them most of the time, and you don't really want to take that to your job, because a lot of times, you don't want them to know that you're homeless. And, you know, they lose their things, or things are stolen. They just, it's just so hard for them to maintain that job. And, hi Bart. I just feel like it's so important to get to know people, and know where they're at in their life, and to learn their struggles, and to truly listen to them, and see what they're dealing with. And it's no different from what I want in my own life. And I think if Dean and I can start Project 1020 from a borrowed room in a church, and a broken-down van in the parking lot, where we stored our cots and things, to this year, purchasing our own building, where we hope to provide shelter for around 30 to 40 people on any given night, and help them with services, to maybe help them get on their feet. I can only imagine and dream what Johnson County could do if we would just all work together, and try to help this situation. We need governmental and non-governmental help to support our cause, and we do have lots of volunteers, just a minute, and interest from churches and civic organizations, and individuals that are ready and willing to help us with Project 1020. I just feel like, from my heart, that if we don't get to know people, and try to feel what they're feeling, we just don't have any right to judge where they are in their lives. And my honest feeling is that most people just need to know that they matter, and it can make a huge impact in their life. We're all different in so many ways, but we're all so much alike. I just can't.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stay here, stay here. You know, I would simply say this, this is another example of a long history of citizen involvement in our community, making a difference in many, many ways in our community. And so, Barb, thank you, and the volunteers that you work with, for making a difference. Thank you very much, and the proclamation also honors that work effort. So, I'll present this proclamation to you, and we'd like to take a photo, so. No, we can just move over here.
Go where?
All right, here, right here's fine. Are there others with you you'd like to have here?
Yes.
Sir!
Well, if there are volunteers, come on up.
Come on, Dean, come on. David, come on. Daryl, come on. Bart.
Daryl's in front.
Okay, hold the proclamation. Somebody can hold the proclamation. Can you open her?
So not familiar.
Okay, well, thank you all. At this time, we will turn to the public comment portion of our agenda. If there's anyone present who would like to address the commission on an item which does not later appear on the agenda, would invite you to the podium, state your name and address, limit your comments to five minutes, and we'll be glad to receive that information. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission during the public comment period? There's no one to be heard, so the public comment portion of our agenda is concluded. I do have two notes for the record. I will be signing an Administration Resolution Number 18-044, enlarging the privately-financed sewer district and providing for the assessment of all applicable fees, charges, and levies of the consolidated main sewer district in the vicinity of 4928 Halsey Street, and an Administrative Resolution Number WD-18-045, enlarging the privately-financed sewer district and providing for the assessment of all applicable fees, charges, and levies of the consolidated main sewer district in the vicinity of 1615, excuse me, 16154 Midland Drive. That concludes the notes for the record, moving to the consent agenda.
Item number one, consider approving the October 25, 2018 business session minutes. Item number two, consider approving the application and data hosting agreement by and between the City of Kansas City, Missouri, and Johnson County, Kansas, and the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas, and Johnson County, Kansas. Item number three, Resolution Number 099-18, consider annual approval and revision of the investment policy for Johnson County. Item number four, consider authorizing the purchase of audiovisual equipment, digital signing, and services from CCS Presentation Systems for the purpose of replacing existing technology in shared conference and training rooms for an amount not to exceed $511,804.45 per State of Kansas Contract Number 42597. Item number five, consider reinstating the expired deferments from Johnson County wastewater system availability charges that have been in place for 15 years, 10-year plus 5-year reinstatements for three properties which continue to be used for agricultural purposes. Item number six, consider reinstatement of deferments from Johnson County wastewater system availability charges that have been in place for 20 years, 10-year plus 10-year, or 10-year plus 5-plus 5-year reinstatements for eight properties which continue to be used for residential and/or agricultural purposes. And item number seven, consider reinstatement of deferments from Johnson County wastewater system availability charges that have been in place for 25 years, 10-year plus 10-year plus 5-year, or 10-plus 5-plus 5-plus 5-year reinstatements for 10 properties which continue to be used for residential and/or agricultural purposes.
I should note that all of these items were represented and discussed at last week's agenda review. Is there any item a commissioner would like to have considered separately? Is there anyone present who would like to have one of these items considered separately? If not, it's back before the commission, a motion would be in order, Mr. Osterhaus.
Move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye, motion carried. Moving to the action agenda, item number eight.
Request for proposal, RFP 2018-096, consider authorizing a contract with Herzog Engineering for arc flash hazard analysis and compliance, Phase II engineering services, in the amount of $341,050.
Mr. Reinhardt.
Good morning, Chairman Ilert and Commissioners, I'm Brad Reinhardt with Johnson County Facilities. This initiative is intended to improve the safety and reliability of the electrical distribution systems throughout the county's buildings. The Phase II effort was approved as part of the 2015 CIP, and it includes engineering services consisting of field verification of our building, electrical switchgear panels, and distribution systems, updating electrical one-line drawings, conducting an electrical hazard analysis to determine the level of hazard present, provide recommendations for mitigating those hazards, and appropriately labeling our electrical equipment in accordance with the National Fire Protection Association standard. An electrical hazard analysis determines the safe protection boundary around our electrical equipment, and identifies the type of personal protective equipment that is required to be worn when working in and around these energized electrical systems. This contract with Herzog Engineering is for approximately 60 buildings that are managed by facilities, managed and maintained by facilities. This RFP went out together with parks, the airport commission, and the libraries, in addition to facilities, and so this contract is just for the facilities portion of the work. They will contract separately with Herzog through their processes. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions to Mr. Reinhardt. Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Reinhardt, this is Phase II. Could you elaborate a little bit on Phase I, and what the scope of that was, and particularly, how much have we spent so far, and by projection, at the end of this process, or this project, what do you anticipate being our total expense?
I'll take the first portion first. The Phase I effort was really going out and inventorying all the systems and equipment, electrical systems and equipment throughout the county. There were over 300 locations, buildings and structures, parks has a lot of structures. All those had to be looked at, to see if they were to be included in the Phase II portion of work, if they needed to be reviewed through this arc flash analysis work in Phase II. So it was really identifying, and updating electrical drawings, and then determining what the scope of work was for the Phase II effort. We spent, I believe, around $187,000 for the Phase I work. This Phase II work is $341,000, and it's hard to say what the total cost will be, because the Phase II work will find, or may not find, hazards that need to be mitigated, and so there'll be an additional cost associated with that, so.
So have we had a rash of arc flashes? I mean, have we had a number, have we had a problem? Has this been something that we've been, had a concern about before the feds brought this to our attention?
I don't believe we've had any arc flash incidents. We have shorts at times. A couple weeks ago, we had a short on our generator system at the courthouse, the existing courthouse, which created a bunch of smoke, and set off the fire alarm. So, electrical issues occur, but we have not had an arc flash incident, because it's a very violent explosion that can occur in an arc flash, different from a short. A short can cause an arc flash, but not always, in that case.
And how often does that occur nationally? Do you have any idea?
I'm sorry, I don't have knowledge on that.
Well, I did take the liberty of looking that up, and it does occur. Some of the statistics talk about it, there being as many as 30 deaths a year from this type of activity, activity is not the right word, but this kind of event, which in the grand scheme of safety issues, it's unfortunate, but it's really not that much. And I'm just, I have struggled with the expenditures to date, and now we're spending another $300,000 on something that I think is important, but I'm just wondering if this is the best use of that resource. And we had this discussion yesterday, and I understand you and your staff do support that, but I still struggle with that. Consequently, Mr. Chairman, my vote will reflect that concern.
Well, you know, we've not had an arc flash experience, and I think our efforts should be devoted to doing what is responsible, to make sure it does not occur. If one, if we did nothing, and one or two were to occur, and a loss of life, then I think we've got an immeasurable responsibility for not taking action. So, I fully support this effort. I think it is responsible, and I think it's something that needs to be done. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Reinhardt, can you tell me, how much money have we spent on this endeavor, total? Arc flash became an issue about a decade ago, maybe 12 years ago, and how much money cumulatively has Johnson County, Kansas, spent trying to address this specific issue?
I don't know that I have that information, I'm sorry. Really, what only information I have today is the $187,000 for Phase I, which included the agencies, as well as the facilities-managed buildings, and then the amount here. So I don't really know. I know wastewater, I believe, has had an effort underway, and they may have completed their effort. I don't know of other entities, but I could follow up with you, and see if I could find out what the cumulative spend has been.
That is a number I would like to have. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? If not, it's back before the commission, a motion would be in order. Mr. Klicka.
I move to authorize a contract with Herzog Engineering for arc flash hazard analysis and compliance, Phase II engineering services, in an amount of $341,050, per request of proposal, RFP 2018-096.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the proposal as recommended, in regard to the arc flash work. Are there any other comments or questions? If not, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
No.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye, motion carried. Next item.
Item number nine, invitation to bid, IFB 2018-101, consider authorizing term and supply contracts with multiple suppliers for furniture purchases in an amount not to exceed $2350,000. These agreements will be for a one-year period, with four additional one-year renewal options.
Good morning, Chairman Ilert, Commissioners. Robin Lines, Purchasing Manager. So, I will be presenting a brief history on the item before you, and the competitive process, and then Roberta Proctor will be indicating how Facilities puts the contract to use. So, the county has done competitive solicitations for furniture, for term and supply, since 1997. Every five years, the county goes out and resolicits for a new contract. The previous bid was done in 2012. In May of 2018, staff extended the current, the then-current term and supply contracts through November 30 of 2018. That allowed Facility staff to conduct the Committee of the Whole. That was conducted on August 2, where Facility's staff delivered the history and intent of the furniture program. In September, a new solicitation was issued, and it closed in October. 90 manufacturer lines were included in the bid. Vendors were requested to provide warranty and service agreement in support of the manufacturers that they provided their bids for. The vendors were awarded, they're being awarded, on the highest discount off of the manufacturer list price. All vendors that are getting awards are located within the Kansas City metro area. There were four manufacturer lines that, we had multiple vendors that provided the same discount, that was the highest discount. In those instances, unbiased staff drew names to determine who got that award. That's how we do it, in purchasing, to make sure that we're fair and open. 15 vendors submitted bids for this. There were six new vendors that submitted bids. Actually, we are awarding to four. Purchasing did spot check the previous discounts compared to these, and we are getting better discounts in the spot check that was made on this new bid. After evaluating the discounts, 12 vendors are being awarded furniture term and supply contracts off of this award today, and a copy of the tabulation is in your packet. I didn't want to go over all of that, because it is quite lengthy with 90 different manufacturers. And with that, I defer to Roberta, to provide information on how the contract will be used.
Thank you. Roberta?
Good morning, Roberta Proctor, with Facilities, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm going to briefly address, excuse me, four slides that were covered in the Committee of the Whole meeting on August 2. And these four slides, you have before you the information, and they really kind of speak to how the foundation of these contracts really support our furniture program, which was the focus of our Committee of the Whole discussion. Excuse me. So the first being that, our three foundational facets of the program is that we provide criteria that supports performance and quality with the products that we purchase or select, and that this program also helps us to manage our assets, because of course, we have over 4,000 employees and a fair amount of furniture, so this affords us control over the, how we can reuse and manage that furniture to continue to keep it in our system. And then finally, it helps us to define our procurement process. And if you look on the next page, we actually speak a little bit to that procurement process, and I won't go over all of this, but, excuse me, it, what it really punctuates is that our term and supply contracts afford us leverage that other venues do not, such as being able to negotiate higher discounts on products and services, that we get expanded in more variety of those products, that cooperative contracts do not afford us. And then with respect to the individual bid process, something that's really punctuated there is the impact on time for our processes. And if you go to our next page, we cover that in a graph here, that kind of indicates if we did a comparison on an acquisition of a $50,000 list price purchase of furniture, and we did not have our term and supply contracts in place, our process in-house between vetting what those products are, taking them out to bid, working with purchasing on that bid process, we would elongate our period of acquisition by 11 weeks. And if that purchase price, that list-based purchase price was 100,000 or more, that would tack another three weeks onto that 11-week period. As you may recall from our Committee of the Whole meeting, it kind of highlighted our sale of our centennial building across the street, and we transitioned that staff into other facilities, so that this could support the brand-new courthouse. support the brand-new courthouse. And if we had to take into account this process where we had to bid every time, that really would have elongated it. We would not have been able to hit that timeframe. So we're very conscious about the time value of money when it comes to our bid process and our acquisition. And then finally, the benefits of our furniture term and supply contracts in that, it just really helps us to respond to our counties and our departments quickly. When they call us with a need, we can readily identify products, a variety of products, and present those options to them. It ensures consistent guaranteed discounts. Again, for your reference, these contracts, although that they represent a base discount price, most of our products there, after you hit a certain purchasing threshold, like 100,000 or more, we do have leverage to negotiate those dollar amounts, and we hold that very seriously when we look at our large purchase buys. It does provide a quality level of service that is insured because we do know our vendors and we establish those relationships. And then, again, it supports our county asset furniture management program. Excuse me. So with that, I just want to punctuate a little bit of the dollar amount that we're requesting and what that's supporting. So primarily, we're going to be focusing on the libraries. We have the new Lenexa library. We have the 2019 Johnson County Library Capital Improvement Program, the Johnson County Library Central Staff Space Consolidation Projects, of course, the new medical examiner. And then, really, we just looked at our average spends for managing our site's furniture that supports not only our employees, nearly 4,000, but as well as our client base that uses our facilities. I would like to point out that this package that's before you today and this discounting, it really only applies to these projects and in context to our general buying. It does not reflect what we're going to be doing for the courthouse. We had indicated at the Committee of the Whole meeting that that process will be, will have a third party come in and do an evaluation of the actual needs for the courthouse. They will be looking at products that meet those needs. They'll be looking at longevity, flexibility of product, so that that continues to support any growth or changes that occur within how the courthouse has to perform from a furniture standpoint. And then from there, we'll be coming back to you at a separate time to request an increase to the term and supply to support that process, but it will remain separate from what we have here before you today. So with that, we stand for questions.
Okay. Mr. Clicker?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, initially, when I raised questions about this item, I was concerned about the dollar amount, and, you know, you kind of wonder what's a wish list and what's the needs and what a wants are. Roberta, I have to say, you've educated me, and I appreciate that. The management, or I should say, the asset management process and the strategy that you're taking for repair, replacement, and so forth, as far as the furniture, makes total sense, appears to be extremely economical, and takes a very much of a business approach. So I appreciate that. And at this point, I don't see any problem with the process, as far as the procurement process, so I'll support this.
Thank you.
Roberta, let me, just for clarification, this term and supply contract will not apply to the courthouse furnishings, is that correct?
That is correct, in so much as that the dollar amount that is factored into our request here does not reflect the purchase amount that we have for the courthouse. But what we do have in our term and supply will be taken into consideration for the evaluation of the furniture for the courthouse.
Okay. Another question in regards to our term and supply process, do the, when you have a specific project or a specific purchase, those come back to the commission for review? Is that available?
Well, may I ask for a little bit more clarity? Do you mean like all purchases or for purchases over 100,000?
Well, I'm asking the question for clarification. Which is it?
Well, if it's over, if it's 100,000 or more, then yes, we always come back to the commission for that approval of that spending. We don't rarely, we very rarely have those types of purchases throughout the course of a calendar year. So our, like if somebody inquires for a chair, we're not customarily coming back for approval for that dollar spend.
So if it's less than 100,000, it does not come back?
That is true, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I interject there? I'm not sure that Roberta's got that 100% correct. If a project is approved by the board, as per the list of projects, for instance, that Roberta called out there, if a project is specifically approved by the board and the furniture associated with that project is procured through a approved term and supply contract such as this, those are the two approvals needed by the board, and Facilities can go ahead and, on behalf of the libraries or whomever helped make those purchases through these contracts.
Thank you.
If a project is not previously approved specifically by the board, then Roberta is 100% correct. It's over 100,000 dollars, it comes to this body.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions?
Chairman.
Mr. Brown?
So for clarity for me, what we're discussing here is a term and supply contract that does not specifically apply to our courthouse. Some items may be picked from this list of FFNE options, but the big purchase for the courthouse is going to come before us again at a later date.
That is correct.
Okay. Other questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Is it just the courthouse? Does it include any other facilities, like the medical examiner facilities?
It does not. Actually, our medical examiner dollar amount is rather low. I mean, it's still over 100,000. I think those dollars are still being vetted on that spend. I would imagine at some point, yes, we would be coming back to you on that, but...
As a separate item?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, it would not be coming back as a separate item. No, not like the courthouse would be coming back to you as a separate item.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, yesterday, I had the opportunity to visit with Ms. Proctor and her staff and asked a couple of questions. One of the things that I struggle with this a little bit on is the life cycle costing, and I was wondering if she could help educate us a little bit about how life cycle costing is considered in this, so that we have an understanding of the cost-benefit analysis in terms of why some firms are selected, or some products are selected and some suppliers are selected and some are not.
Sure. So actually, we look at a multitude of components when we're selecting furniture. So the first being, what are the needs of the users? And then, are, when we look at the furniture that we have on our term and supply, and currently, we have ninety different manufacturer lines, so that provides us diversity, so we can go back and provide solutions to the end user, so they can make a selection. They do have control over what is being selected. We're really not dictating that, per se. So as you might also remember, in our Committee of the Whole, I kind of talked about the warranties and how much that really speaks to our ability to have, manage, and maintain product, and that manufacturer's commitment to the quality of that product and to help us manage it. So as we look at product warranties, a good portion of the furniture that we have, like seating, will have 12- to 15-year warranties. We've also evaluated the constructibility of that seating. So we had highlighted different furniture items that we've had. Actually, some of the seating that you see before you, we acquired in 1997, and we've had it for 21 years, and most of the chairs that we have that are like that in our facility still have the same fabric on them. So it's really kind of an evaluation of that constructed, the constructibility of the piece, the materials that go into that, that warranty that supports if there is failure for performance of that item. Maybe a work surface delaminates, or electrical short in the panel, that the manufacturer backs that warranty. And with that, and with that ability to have strongly constructed furniture, it allows us to keep reusing it. We actually manage our product very tightly. We keep it in the warehouse, and we keep it itemized, and I highlighted that in our Committee of the Whole meeting as well, so that it stays in good shape and in good form, and we can reuse it. And fortunately, we have users who are very generous and keep our environment and our furniture clean and ready for use and reuse.
Follow on, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Proctor, any given year, what, approximately, what percent of the acquisitions are, I'm going to use the term mass acquisitions, that you determine versus individual? Say, I have a problem with my individual chair. I'd like to get it repaired or replaced versus going through an entire office or department and putting in new furniture. Is it 50/50, or most of it individual?
It's mostly individual. Truthfully, in the course of a calendar year, chairs are a prime example. We actually only have two chair orders per month on average per year. So really, our purchases are not large acquisitions. Most of the work that we do is reuse of our existing product.
Okay. Well, we have a $2 million, or over $2 million, so what are we, those aren't all individual purchases?
You're right. So again, I would remind you that the lion's share of that acquisition is for libraries, so we have a brand-new library, and that's the primary portion of that acquisition.
So that'll be a mass purchase?
That will be. And, you know, I would just punctuate on that. The libraries do stand differently from our other environments where we have a lot of systems furniture. The libraries are really supported by a very diverse range of furniture, shelving, ancillary pieces like side seating.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chairman. So Ms. Proctor, if, what percentage then of this request that's in front of us now is for the library?
Well, I can't tell you percentages, but I can tell you dollar amounts if you'd like. Okay. We have 1.3 million has been estimated for the Lenexa library. Please understand that when we talk furniture, furniture includes things like trash cans and clocks, floor mats, kind of odd-type items that you wouldn't necessarily reveres furniture. We only have 100,000 dollars that's been determined for the 2019 Johnson County Capital Improvement Program, 250,000 for the Johnson County Central Staff Space Consolidation Project, and then we have 250,000 for the new medical examiner project. It is our estimate that that purchase will really, by and large, be more ancillary-type items, and again, trash cans and clocks. And then for our yearly spend, just average, you know, everybody kind of needing one-off items throughout the course of a year, that's 450,000. That takes into account libraries, because the dollar amounts allocated for the libraries are separate from their daily needs, parks, and then the rest of the county as well.
Okay. A couple of other questions, Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. So when we're analyzing and deciding on, I'm going to use a chair as an example, when we're deciding on a chair, and you said constructibility and durability and all the itties that are in the part of that, does a higher-priced product guarantee a better product?
Not necessarily, no. We have some chairs that have really great price points on them that start off at a good low list price.
And then, because you've said that how the inventory is managed and tracked, how long does a chair with a five-year warranty or a 10-year warranty last?
Most of the chairs that we have that have had a five-year warranty, we get right to about the five-year marker, and then we find it breaks. Most of the chairs that we have, the lion's share, the components that comprise that chair have a lifetime warranty. Fabric varies just because of how much people are in and out of their chair, and then the pneumatic device generally carries about a 12-year warranty. And I do give credit to our vendors that we have been up to the 11th hour on parts where the warranty may technically have run out, but they still take care of us and cover that.
Okay. And then, I think I've got one last question for today, but the chairs that we're sitting in here look to me to be about comparable to what I saw in an inventory when I first became a commissioner to look at chairs, about a $1,500 chair.
A list price?
List. So on a list basis, there's almost $20,000 where the chair's sitting here, and we use them for about four hours a week. That seems like a very expensive chair, ergonomically correct and a lot of money. How do you, from your department's perspective, manage how much a chair is used? Does it require a $1,500 chair when maybe a $300 chair would suit it because someone's not in that seat all day? I completely understand, I have ladies in my office, too, that work for me, and they're in it, they're accountants.
Right.
They sit in that chair eight hours a day practically. I mean, they are in that chair a lot. We've got really nice chairs for them, because that's important
Sure.
to them. But for me as a commissioner, all of, I don't even know what this chair does. It's got buttons on it I haven't pressed, because I don't know if it's going to throw me out. I don't know if it's going to fall over. I don't know what's going to happen. So it seems that in this instance, we've got overkill. From that perspective, how do you analyze that employee, Tom Smith in Public Works? What kind of chair does Tom, what should he have?
Sure.
What should we buy for him?
Well, I would remind everybody, too, that even though this is a high-list value price, we did get these chairs for about 62% off, so you're getting them at a substantial discount. The other component that we take into consideration, and I agree, you guys are not sitting in these chairs all day long like some folks in our county are, but if we have to reuse that chair, that chair will now recycle to somewhere else where it can be sat in for eight hours a day. So when we meet with individuals who do sit at their desk and they're there for eight, maybe nine hours, I'm actually one who's at my desk a fair bit, we have a variety of chairs that we show them, and we let them sit in that chair, and they test it out for what's ergonomically correct for them. And we do show them all the bells and whistles, which I'm more than happy to show you all the gadgets on your chair if you'd like, because it's really important. And honestly, the average worker's comp claim comes down to $30,000 per employee, and those worker comp claims honestly really tap back into people who are not sitting at an ergonomic environment, or who are not actually explained how to properly sit in an environment to be ergonomic. So even though we have, and we have a litany of chairs, I think we have about seven different chairs that you can select from, we have worked with individuals who, you know, those chairs just didn't quite meet their needs. And so we continue to work with them to vet solutions. We bring in test chairs and trial chairs. So it's actually a pretty laborious process to ensure that whatever chair a person is sitting in, it really warrants the comfort that they need to do their job, and it meets the tasking needs of their job. And that if they are not the continued user of that chair, that we can then have that to give to others.
So from our stable of chairs, the seven that there are, that someone can come in and sit down and try them out, what is the price point? Whether, I don't care if it's retail or our actual cost, but what's the spread? From what low to what high of those seven chairs? What is the range?
We have one that I believe is coming in around 450, and then I think our highest one's about 850.
Our cost?
Mm-hmm.
That's discounted number?
That's our cost.
Okay, thank you.
I should note, Commissioners are not the only one that sits in these chairs, so they are used to be on every Thursday. So any other questions? All right, thank you. Robin and Roberta. Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? Please, all right, come to the podium.
I couldn't hear anything. I'm not talking, so if I have a...
State your name and address, and we'll be glad to receive your comment.
My name's Teresa Haney. My address, 14599 South Twilight Lane. I've got a couple of questions, because I know we're, I'm with United Office Products, and the only thing, if I don't hyperventilate talking, the only thing that I'm, the, I understand how they're doing the bid process and stuff like that, but our concern, not only for us, but every other vendor in the Johnson County, is, one, when you have ninety, how many vendors did you, or how many manufacturers, whatever the manufacturers they had, if you only select, a lot of times, they only select this handful of vendors, or the handful of manufacturers. So like, we got the global, for instance. How many global purchase orders are actually submitted? It would be interesting to see how many actual of the POs and the furniture that's actually being purchased, even though it's a fair process as far as, okay, what are you going to do for each vendor as far as discount? If they don't use your product, it doesn't matter. And our fight is that, I think a lot of the furniture that is being used is a proprietary brand. I know they're saying that, and I respect that they're trying to use other furniture in other locations, but sometimes the price that you pay for that to begin with, a couple of years ago, we had a Johnson County Department at the end of the year trying to use some of their money. They asked me for if I could get Knoll, and I cannot get Knoll because it's a proprietary brand, meaning that only one person in the Kansas City area can buy that product. I don't think any taxpayer's money should go to one product that you can own, and they will not take alternates on it. So the problem is, I called Knoll, and I said, how much, I said, I can get you a different one. I said, how much is that conference table? They said $12,000 was a list price. So when you guys are talking about discounts off of, the discount is very disleaving. I can up my list price and give you guys 99% off, but the bottom dollar should be what the bottom dollar is. A $12,000 conference table in any county office should not be approved. At 70% off, that's still $3,600, and that's if you get 70% off. We got them a conference table that's very functional for $1,200, and that saved the, you know, you guys, what, $2,400 on that conference table? So that's the only thing we're fighting for, especially, not necessarily, I'm not trying to rock the boat on every everyday purchases, but especially for this new courthouse. I think when they say that, when it's presented that there's only one manufacturer that does all these products and they're the best, I think if you looked at our panel system versus somebody else's panel system and looked at it apples-to-apples, functionality should be the most important thing when you're looking at... functionality should be the most important thing when you're looking at what a county employee or me or anybody else in a, in a company is setting out. Not necessarily if it's the best of the best or whatever, because this is, you know, taxpayers' money. So I think if we presented, if every manufacturer presented what their panel system was equivalent to Knoll or whoever else they have that we cannot get, I don't think you guys would even notice the difference. I mean, I think that you guys would see pros and cons to each one, but the bottom line should be the bottom dollar. And I think that alternates should be accepted, not just, we're going to, because like I said, I bet most of the purchases are to one or two vendors. You know, little scraps here for the rest of them, but I bet they don't purchase 90 of those manufacturers throughout the year. I don't know for sure, but it would be interesting to check out. I'm just fighting for the courthouse. I can't even guarantee if you put it out for bid that we would get it because on county, when we're bidding the, uh, school districts, we go 9% above cost, delivered and installed, and we don't get it some of the times. These people go so darn low on these bids that you would, I don't, I think you'd be surprised at how much you would save if you looked at, if you put it out for bid. It may take 11 weeks, but it could save you thousands, you know, tens and tens of thousands of dollars. I think you'd be surprised. I mean, we've got a bid right now, we're going for Kansas City, Kansas School District. And it's like, you know, we'll work on it forever and, you know, just go margin above cost and we won't get half of it. Because these, these people out here, plus it gives everybody an equal opportunity. And if we don't get it, that's fine, but just to not even get the opportunity because this is what we've actually specified for our panel system, it's supposed to be the best. And this is who's, you know, it's, you know, we can, uh, take purchase, you know, pieces from other locations. They're not taking anything in the new courthouse from another location. So anyway, that's the only thing, that was my only concern. Again, on the, on the regular purchases, I have no problem, but we're fighting for the new courthouse just to get an opportunity. So that's all I wanted to say. Hey, thanks.
Thank you. Sherri, what else? Sure.
I'm Jim Hutchinson. I live at 10741 West, 154, 56 Harrison Overland Park. I started United Office Products 47 years ago with four other guys at $5,000. And we made a million dollars a company out here. We compete with Office Max, Office Depot and Staples all over. But it's like my daughter said, that they use two vendors that use Herman Miller or Knoll. That's all that's in the courthouse. They don't use any other furnace, uh, systems furniture except that. It's just two people that have that, two companies that have it. They're the only ones that can get it, so therefore they can give you 71% off. But another thing that they're like the school district does is they have Hollis and Miller. And that's the thing that you guys should consider, having an independent thing like Hollis and Miller. They go out and they spec the school districts, all the schools. When we bid it, probably 70 or 80% of the time, we get it because we do go so low on the thing. But it's always delivered and installed, delivered and installed when they get a bid. What you guys do is, what the county does, is they put it out for bid and say, they, somebody gives you 81%. But then you're paying people to install it. That's an extra, that's an extra amount of money that you guys are paying. Where, when a bid that you go for that new courthouse, you should get an independent thing like Hollis and Miller or some of these other architects to spec that furniture. They will look at every vendor because they do know what the difference in Knoll and what the difference in Herman Miller and what's the difference in Evolve that Global has and all these others. All the systems are all the same for these manufacturers because they wouldn't be selling their stuff if it wasn't the same. But when you put out the bid, you should put it delivered and installed. And I'll guarantee you that you'll get a better price than you putting 81% off of a high price and then having somebody install it because they can charge anything they want to install it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, if there's no one else to be heard, the item is back before the commission. Uh, I have one last question. The number of vendors in this term and supply contract, remind me, is how many?
90.
Pardon?
90.
There's 12 vendors.
Oh, I'm sorry, 12 vendors, but 90 manufacturing lines.
Okay, all right. But 12 vendors are represented in this term and supply?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chairman. I, I would like to see the spreadsheet, a breakdown of the, the last FFNE, what, last, maybe the last couple. How many items per category with the low-cost provider? How many times, how many times were those products ordered? I'd like to know, how much did we buy? Because I, I think that was a great point. You, you can be the low-cost provider, but if everyone still goes and buys the most expensive thing on the list, it doesn't matter if you're the low-cost provider. I'd like to know how many times did the low-cost provider make a sale on, on product?
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ashcraft?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, and you raised a, a good point too. Um, it has to do with the quality of the furnishings. From time to time, you hear of some extravagant purchases. Um, because I may like a particular chair that's, uh, very, very nice and very, very expensive. And to Commissioner Brown's point, if it's only used four hours a week, um, the justification for that in my mind might be 100%. I, I want this chair, but how do we, um, how do we manage that in the county to make sure that we aren't, um, overspending or conversely underspending, trying to lowball something that's not going to last, uh, not have a reasonable life cycle? How, is that your responsibility or you share that with the departments? How, how do you manage that?
So our department does have some guidelines. Um, we have had, um, individuals who've come back to us and I'm not going to isolate anyone in particular, but we have had individuals in the last year who wanted to purchase some chairs and they were outside of our standards that we have. Um, they were leather chairs, they were very expensive, they were high back kind of executive chairs, and the price point on them was absorbent. And we had indicated to them that we could not support that purchase, that we had good seating that we could offer at a very good price point, but that we did not need to actually spend with a discount 1,500 or $1,800 on a chair. Um, so we do regulate that. We do have those conversations with our user groups and make them aware that, um, we need to be prudent with our spends and we need to think about how much money we are spending. And then that the dollars that we extol towards the purchased products allow for longevity and for that reuse. So hence the standards, the standards really play into our ability to continuously reuse product, but, um...
And they'll be monitoring this for the new courthouse and, uh, the other facilities that we're adding?
Most assuredly, yes, most assuredly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Clicker?
Mr. Chairman, just as a final note here, um, as I said in my first comments here, um, I got an education here over the last few weeks relative to furniture. My initial reaction, as I said, $2.8 million price tag for furniture, I, you know, it's scary. When you take into consideration, we're, we're trying to, um, furnish a couple of buildings and deal with the ongoing repair and, and replacement of existing furniture, uh, that dollar amount comes in line. I'm assuming that all the vendors that are being chosen are going to be chosen for the right reasons and the right equipment that needs to come on. And, um, I've, I've got full confidence in the staff to manage this. Roberta, I, and I've heard, I've discussed this issue with you a number of times and you've given me the assurance that you take the county's interest, whether it's, uh, the safety and wellbeing of the employees using that furniture or constituents or whoever, that that, and then the long-term of that furniture is, is definitely in, um, in the matrix is what you consider down the line. And I appreciate that.
Mr. Allen?
Uh, just to follow up, uh, the, the comment that was made about, uh, on the courthouse bid, uh, to, to consider taking a bid with the furniture installed. Uh, to me, that seems very appropriate on a large purchase like that. So, uh, I don't know when it comes to that process, but that's something I'd like to see. I just noticed the last couple of days, staff's been reconfiguring some, uh, furniture on this floor and pretty labor intensive. So it'd be nice, especially on such a large project, to see that difference. And I think that frankly is probably a very legitimate approach to consider.
Well, I do recall that back in August, we had a study session in regards to, uh, term and supply issues. Uh, and, uh, no changes were made by the commission, as I recall, in that process. Uh, and this contract is consistent with, uh, the policy that we have. And, uh, so at this time, a motion would be in order?
Happy to do so?
Pardon?
Happy to do so.
All right. Mr. Schaefer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to authorize term and supply contracts with multiple suppliers for furniture purchases in an amount not to exceed $2,350,000 per invitation to bid IFB 2018-101. These agreements will be for one year, a one-year period with four additional one-year renewal options.
Second?
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the term and supply, uh, recommendations. Uh, I would just simply make, uh, want to emphasize this does not include the new courthouse. Uh, and, uh, the uses, uh, have been further identified in the staff's presentation. Any other discussion? Uh, if not, clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Clicker?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
No.
And Chairman Ilert?
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number 10, Resolution Number 075-18. Application Numbers NW-RN2-3408, OL, and NW-PP-FP-3409. Consider a request from William Carter, applicant landowner, for a, one, rezoning from RLD Residential Low Density District to Residential Neighborhood 2 District and two preliminary and final plat for two residential lots on approximately five acres located at 13115 Lakeshore Drive.
Mr. Leipzig?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jay Leipzig, Planning Director. Uh, this item, we discussed, uh, been before you several times, uh, Lakeshore Drive, 13115. Uh, for Carter Acres, uh, it was, uh, went before the Northwest Consolidated Zoning Board, uh, the first time on July 16th, uh, that item was continued. And then the zoning board made a determination, uh, recommendation uh, to, to propose a shared driveway with this property, uh, along with the approval of the rezoning on August the 20th. Um, staff also was consistent with that recommendation. Uh, and then, uh, went before, back before the Board of County Commissioners on October 15th. It was remanded back to you with the same recommendation from the zoning board at that meeting. In this item, I've, I pulled up the, uh, the aerial which shows Lot 1, Lot 2. Um, Mr. Carter's home is there at Lot 1. Um, and so we have, this is the plat of the option that the zoning board recommended approval as well as staff. It shows a shared drive, uh, between Lot 1 and Lot 2. And then one of the provisions of that was the removal of the, the existing drive to Mr. Carter's home. Uh, it does show 131st Street going through the plat on the, uh, be the northwest corner. Um, after further discussion last week, another alternative was proposed to show a, a revised plat. Mr. Carter, uh, submitted this as well, which would, which would allow two separate entrances for Lot 2 and Lot 1. Um, with the, the idea being that, that 131st Street, uh, when that is extended through, he will have to connect, this existing drive there for Lot 1 will have to connect 131st, 131st Street anyway. Um, so that was, that was discussed, um, and reviewed by the board as well. Uh, with that, I, uh, be happy to stand for any questions you might have. This item, um, though, is, is in the, uh, asking for the rezoning. Uh, staff does not have any issues with rezoning. Uh, originally, when this plat was, was originally proposed, um, uh, the first time before the, a series of, of lot splits, uh, it was recommended that internal street be provided. Um, uh, that was not, was not approved. And so, uh, it, we did have, have direct access. And so this, this is just a, uh, it's a culmination of, of several kind of issues involved with planning over a number of years.
Uh, Mr. Leipzig, um, so there are how many current access to this property?
There is, we have, have one access at, at Lot 1, but there is a, there's a, Lot 1 used to have a circular drive, which is, is no longer used. Uh, however, there is a small drive there that was used a number of years ago. I, uh, Mr. Carter might be able to elaborate on that further, but...
All right, well, let me ask you this. The, uh, the zoning board has recommended denial of this request, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
And the reasons thereof, therefore?
They, they, because, so it's consistent with our subdivision regulations and limiting access under arterials. Uh, and they thought that the shared drive was a good compromise rather than have two separate drives for Lot 1 and Lot 2.
So one drive exists and then there would be a second drive?
Correct.
And, uh, as I recall, there was some discussion about the number of ingress egresses on this street already, is that right?
Yes, there is a number of them on, for Lakeshore. I believe that number, uh, Keith, Keith Markway is here with, with Public Works, I believe it's 38, approximately. There, there's several of them. Uh, the distance between the two drives, um, has not been, I specifically located it, but it's about 213 feet between the two drives.
And that's appropriate or it's not?
No, it would not be appropriate. Um, it's not consistent with our, with our, our, our regulations. Uh, however, uh, to Mr. Carter's point with, there are two, if, if there are two separate drives there, one of the drives will be removed anyway when 131st Street goes through.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chairman. As I said last week, when I asked for the continuance on this to this week, um, I provided, uh, paperwork to each of the commissioners that shows, uh, from AMES maps in 1998 aerial. And in the picture, there are three red arrows that clearly point to the circular driveway. The culvert itself is still there. It has not ever been removed, it is still there. Um, so from my perspective, I don't see this as a new driveway point. There's already a culvert and an existing driveway that's clearly in the picture from 20 years ago. So I understand that, that in a lot split, there's a consideration and, and it should be talked about, but I don't see this as a new driveway. This is a driveway that's been existent, in existence and was used. And just by virtue of the fact that nobody's gone in and out on it, I don't think makes it go away. I don't think there's a statute of limitations on using your driveway when you lose control of it. So from that perspective, I'm supportive of, um, allowing for the two driveway entrances onto Lakeshore. I have spoken to several folks who live on Lakeshore and asked what their opinion was based on traffic and flow. Um, and everybody was supportive that I spoke to. The, uh, city of Olathe does not have this 131st Street connection street coming through on any long-range planning for them. It is simply a, a, out there somewhere, someday maybe. The problem with getting 131st Street pushed through, which will increase traffic undoubtedly, is that there is no developer to spread an excise tax or an impact fee across to help pay for that piece of road, which means the city of Olathe is going to pay for the road completely. City of Olathe, I just, I, having talked to the mayor, having talked to two other council members, this is not on their radar of consideration. They've got much more pressing issues at bigger, higher traffic locations and more important impacting more people. They've got bigger fish to fry. So from that perspective, I'm, I'm in favor of, um, allowing for the two driveway points to allow Mr. Carter, um, what he already has, just ratifying it. So, thank you.
Jay, was this historic data presented to the zoning board?
Yes, they, they were aware of the, um, that the, that the other, the drive was there. We did talk a little bit about the extension of 131st Street as well. Um, to elaborate on Mr. Brown's, uh, comments, it is not part of the current CIP plan for the city of Olathe, which means it is, uh, far, far out. We don't know exactly when, uh, but there is a lot of development activity going on around it.
Well, let me ask you this. Uh, along, along, uh, Lakeshore Drive, 131st Street, uh, how many other undeveloped tracks are there that, uh, any decision we make here might have an impact?
Um, as I recall, I'm not aware of significant areas of undeveloped land.
The majority, Chairman, of the, of the lot splits along there are five or 10 acre split outs. And it would require a huge assemblage and a massively expensive assemblage of land to put together a, probably what would take in, uh, being a developer and understanding those numbers, an 80-acre tract of land to be able to justify the, the density and the traffic cycles that would justify improving 131st. And there's, it's not, it's just, it's not feasible.
Well, okay, but, no, no, my question is, is, is there, are there other tracks similar to this that would want to come in and... to this that would want to come in and have more than one access point? Let me put it that way.
There is at least one that already has a round circle driveway. They've got two. There's at least one on the east side, I can't remember the address on it, but there's at least one, I'm unaware of any others, though, anyone else asking for that.
All right, thank you. Other questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure I have preference one way or the other on this, although I tend to kind of default to individual property rights and respect that in the individual. This is just going to be a family home, right? So, family traffic, it's not like an apartment complex, or, so, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with there being a second drive in place. It may have a nominal impact, but I would, I would respect individual property rights more than have a concern in that regard.
Other, other questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you. The variations of the two, of the two, the two lot splits, with the fence line or the section line, does that have a bearing on this decision one way or the other?
It, 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 it does, in, in one way, Commissioner, in that the, the, the second option with the slight diagonal for Lot One and Lot Two, that accounts for the fence between those two. That's the difference. And so, in working with, and the applicant, his engineer, proposed the diagonal lot line.
But the, but, but the midpoint on Lake Shore Drive is still the same on either...
Yes, yeah, we'd still have to count for that fence.
On either option?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions? Mr. Brown?
I just have one more, just a comment. It was a comment I made last week, I feel compelled to make it again. My, my support of variance on this has nothing to do with our zoning board, with our planning staff, with our planning director, with the county. This is, as I had said when we approved these, the revisions, there were going to be one-off scenarios, because it's in the country, and that is the nature of living in the country, is there is always some little quirk that's a little bit different. So, from that perspective, this is not pushing back on anyone or any entity with, that has touched this. This is simply, in my opinion, a property rights issue. This is, makes sense, because the driveway has been there at a minimum since 1998, and I see this as simply allowing Mr. Carter to have the access point which he already enjoys. So, from my perspective...
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Jay. Is the applicant present, any comments they'd like to make? Yes.
My name's Bill Carter, and I live at 13115 South Lake Shore Drive, at the house on the Lot Number One. One question came up about what's going to be done with the property. Between Lot One and Lot Two, on the south side of Lot Two is my son-in-law's house that he just built, and moved into about two months ago. So, the whole thought to this process for my wife and I is that house that we have on Lot One is too large for us, as we go into our golden years, so to speak, and so, we thought we'd build a smaller house, a little closer to the grandkids and, and my son-in-law. So, that's pretty much the, the crux of it. The shared driveway is, it, it has cost us to, the potential sale of the house, because the people that were looking at it said that there's too many legal liabilities and hassles to consider with the shared driveway, they didn't want to be a part of it. The other thing is that whoever I sell the house to with the shared driveway, I, I don't know who they are, and I don't, what they're, don't know what they're going to be like, and it, I just don't think it would be, it wouldn't be worth the headache, especially, as I say, since there are two drives there. And the original owner of that house had a sidewalk that came down off of the, the house to meet the circle drive, and he just let it go, because he asphalted the north side of the driveway that comes up to the garage, and never maintained it. But I guarantee you, I've never been able to grow grass, for the most part, on that circle drive all the way around. It burns out every year, so, it has definitely been there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? All right, if there's no one else to be heard, the item will be back before the commission, a motion is in order. Mr. Brown?
Chairman, I have a question before, and I'm, I'm happy to make the motion, but I have another question for Mr. Carter. They're adding a stipulation that when 131st Street is constructed along the north side of Lot One, is shown on the plat, that the existing driveway at that time would be connected to 131st Street. Is that acceptable as a condition to you?
(inaudible)
So, you're, you're okay with, okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure. Chairman, I'm happy to make the motion.
Okay.
Proceed.
Sure.
Thank you. This is going to take a minute, so take a deep breath. I move to adopt Resolution Number 075-18, approving a rezoning to RN2 Residential Neighborhood Two District, for the reasons set forth within the resolution, and granting a waiver to allow two separate driveway entrances onto Lake Shore Drive, plus the two other waivers from the minimum infrastructure requirements as recommended by the zoning board. I further move to approve a preliminary and final plat for two residential lots to be known as Carter Acres Two, with the plat also showing two separate driveway entrances. The plats are approved for the reasons and subject to the stipulations recommended by the zoning board, with the following revisions. One, adding a plat note stating that when 131st Street is constructed along Lot One at the north side, as shown on the plat, the existing driveway connecting to Lake Shore Drive will be removed by the then-current landowner, and a new driveway to the house would be required to access 131st Street. Number two, the deletion of a plat, of plat stipulation number 3E, and those portions of stipulation number seven pertaining to shared driveways, as outlined by staff, that were previously recommended by the zoning board, and three, allowing an adjustment to the common property line, as shown on the final plat drawing.
Second. Motion is made and seconded to approve the rezoning and the plating, and with waivers so noted.
I have a question.
Mr. Schaefer.
Does this, item, item number three, the, so which plot line, or which, which midpoint line are we going to get? The straight one or the diagonal one?
We are looking at the diagonal one, the one that's presented before you right...
The one we have in front of us.
On the screen, yes.
All right. Any other comments? Ms. Klicka?
I appreciate Commissioner Brown noting the 131st access at a future time, and keeping that in mind. And I echo Commissioner Brown's, I know, Jay, you've, you've worked hard to advocate for the zoning board's recommendations and so forth, and I know you've spent a number of hours, both with Commissioner Brown, myself, over this issue, and we respect the position that you're taking in trying to maintain the integrity of the plan, but I like what Mr. Brown has said, in our rural areas that we both represent, that there's sometimes some crazy things that come up, and different things that come up, and we have to react and respond to them. But thank you.
Well, I will support the motion in regards to 135th, 131st Street, with the number of access points that are already there. The addition of one more seems not, in my judgment, to make a big difference, but I would underscore that I don't see this action as precedent-setting for any future lot splits, et cetera. Agreed. So, any further questions or discussion? Motion is before us, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number 11, Resolution Number 093-18, consider city of Gardner administrative permit, amending the exterior lighting plan of an approved preliminary development plan for a warehouse distribution center, Midwest Commerce Center, Coleman Warehouse, at 17150 Mercury Street, Gardner, Kansas.
Good morning. Mr. Leipzig.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jay Leipzig. This item was brought forward from the city of Gardner, at the Coleman Warehouse Building at 17150 Mercury Street in Gardner, Kansas. It is within one mile of the Johnson County New Century Airport, that's why this item is brought before you today. It's to install, to amend the existing lighting plan, to install eight 25-foot light poles. It was presented for the Airport Commission on October 24th, 2018. That body recommended unanimous approval of this item. Staff is also recommending, recommending approval of this item.
Okay, questions? Is there anyone present who'd like to address the commission on this item? There being no one to be heard, it's back before the commission, a motion is in order. Mr. Brown?
Give me one second, Chairman. I move to adopt Resolution Number 093-18, approving an amendment to the exterior lighting plan for an approved preliminary development plan at 17150 Mercury Street, for the reasons and subject to the stipulations set forth within the resolution.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the consideration in regards to the lighting request. Further questions or comments? There being none, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number 12, Resolution Number 094-18, consider city of Gardner application numbers SP-18-05, PP-18-04, and FP-18-06, site plan for a new grocery store and pharmacy, and preliminary and final plat to be known as Main Street Marketplace Plat, located at the northwest corner of Moonlight Road and East Main Street.
Jay.
Good morning, Jay Leipzig, Planning Director. This item is also from the city of Gardner, for a new grocery store called the Main, and pharmacy called the Main Street Marketplace, at Moonlight Road and East Main Street. It was approved by the city of Gardner on September 25th, 2018. The staff is also recommending approval of this item. It was brought before the, the Airport Commission, because it is within one mile of Johnson County New Century Airport. That body reviewed it on October 24th, 2018, recommended unanimous approval, and, so my, my comments.
Okay. Again, this is in proximity to New Century, so that's the reason it's before us. All parties have approved the request.
Yes, sir.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Brown?
It is an exciting opportunity for Gardner to be, picking up a brand-new grocery store, and the folks down there are very excited about it, and I'm ready to make a motion when you're ready, Chairman, thank you.
All right. Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? If not, Mr. Brown, your motion is in order.
Thank you, Chairman. I move to adopt Resolution Number 094-18, approving city of Gardner application numbers SP-18-05, PP-18-04, and FP-18-06, for the reasons and subject to the stipulations set forth within the resolution.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the application to the city of Gardner in regards to the grocery store. Any further comments or questions? There being none, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number 13, Resolution Number 095-18, consider city of Overland Park applications for a preliminary plat known as Century Farms, and Phase One and Phase Two final plats to be known as the Century Farms First and Second, located at the southwest corner of 167th and Corvera, Overland Park, Kansas.
Jay.
Good morning, Jay Leipzig, again, Planning Department. This item is brought for you from the city of Overland Park, for a preliminary plan, preliminary plat for residential subdivision for 225 single-family residential homes. It was, it is within one mile of the Johnson County Executive Airport. It was approved by the city of Overland Park. It was also, and staff is recommending approval, and it was presented for the Airport Commission on October 24th, 2018, and that body recommended unanimous approval of this item.
Okay, again, all parties have recommended approval. Any questions or comments? Anyone present like to address the commission on this item? If not, it's back for the commission. Mr. Klicka, do you have a motion?
I do. I move to adopt Resolution Number 095-18, approving the city of Overland Park application for Century Farms preliminary plat and Phase One and Two final plats, for the reasons and subjects to the stipulations set forth in the resolution.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolution, the preliminary and final plat, as noted. No further questions or comments? Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number 14, Resolution Numbers 096-18, 097-18, and 098-18, consider city of Olathe application numbers FP-18-0028, FP-18-0029, and FP-18-0030. Final plats for Willows Crossing, second, third, and fourth plats, for single-family residential uses in the vicinity of 143rd Street and Flum Road.
Mr. Leipzig.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jay Leipzig, again. This item from the city of Olathe. It's for the final plat for the Willows Crossing, for the first, third, and fourth of plats. This item was, staff is recommending approval. The city of Olathe has been through all of their actions, and they recommend, or they, they approved this item. It's brought before you, because it is within one mile of the Johnson County Executive Airport. The Airport Commission met on October 24th, 2018, and recommended unanimous approval of this item. As I said, the staff is also recommending approval. And I'll show you a better graphic, it, it looks confusing on there, but each, you can, if you look at the three items in red, we have the various plats for Exhibit A, also the, the other section for the second, and then the third part with the other, the fourth plat.
Jay, do I recall that there was an agreement that property owners or potential developers or buyers of individual properties, there would be notification of the proximity to the airport?
Yes, that is correct. That's, that's one of the requirements that's placed on each deed.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chairman. To follow up to, to your question, that is, becomes a, a matter of the permanent record and survives closing as part of the title or transfer in the deed on the property, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chair, that will be there for perpetuity.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Again, anyone present like to address the commission on this item? If not, it's back before the commission, a motion would be in order.
Chairman.
Yes.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 096-18, approving the city of Olathe application number FP-18-0028, a final plat for Willows Crossing, second plat, for the reasons, subjects to the stipulations, as set forth in the resolution. I move to adopt Resolution Number 097-818, approving the city of Okla, city of Olathe application number FP-18-0029, a final plat for Willis Creek, third plat, for the reasons and subjects to the stipulations set forth in the resolution. And further, I move to adopt Resolution Number 098-18, approving the city of Olathe application FP-18-0030, a final plat for Willows Crossing, fourth plat, for the reasons and subjects, and subject to the stipulations set forth in the resolution.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution, and the plat is noted. Any further questions or comments? Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Application, item number 15, application number NW-PP-FP-3434LE, consider a request from Phelps Engineering Incorporated, applicant, and Tesco Investments, Scott Cooper, landowner, for a preliminary and final plat approval for one lot on approximately three acres to be known as Tesco, located at 31825 West 135th Street.
Mr. Leipzig.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jay Leipzig. This item for final plat, or, excuse me, for the plat from Phelps Engineering, of 131st Street, was, went before the Northwest Consolidated Zoning Board on October 15th, 2018. That body unanimously recommended denial of this item. Staff is also recommending denial of this item. The reason being, it, it, we have an access for, off 135th Street, for a three-acre lot with an existing home that does not have street frontage, thirty, required 35 feet of frontage. an existing home that does not have street frontage, required 35 feet of frontage off the street. There are a variety of problems associated with this parcel. It was a mortgage parcel that was sold in a sheriff's sale, and that is part of the reason why it is, it's, from a, from a planning perspective and a lot creation perspective, it really is, is kind of, it needs some additional work. As I said, staff is recommending denial, zoning board recommended denial. At the zoning board meeting on October 15th, there was quite a bit of discussion between the property owner and the adjacent property owner was, was there that evening as well, and I believe, I believe the applicant is here this morning, that is requesting this item be remanded back for additional consideration by the zoning board to give them more time to try to look at a more creative solution.
I think that's a good idea. If there is one, and looking at this issue, I'm not sure there is, but, Mr. Brown?
Chairman, just a couple of questions. Mr. Leipzig, as, this property was obtained by the owner as part of sheriff's sale and foreclosure procedure, and that's how he acquired this property. So the county had a role, had, had some role in facilitating the sale of that. Subsequently, has the county issued permits for any thing to be done at this location since, since this owner acquired the property?
There's been, we had an instance where a, a septic system permit was, was issued that I believe was about a year and a half ago. That's the first time, I think, we ended up talking about this particular item. We also had a, an electrical permit that was also issued over there as well, I believe in 2015. So there have been previous permits issued to this property.
So at different parts of Johnson County government have, have recognized it as a standalone property, and then parts are not now recognizing it as standalone, which creates the confusion and why I will, would be happy to make the motion to remand this back to the zoning board for further consideration.
Well, but, Jay, I, I, how could there be an appropriate access to this property? I, I, I don't see, I don't see even a potential answer at this point.
And there again, Mr. Chairman.
I'm putting you on the spot, but.
Toll gates, Mr. Chairman, toll gates.
Probably, probably is no answer to my question, I, I appreciate that, but, okay, all right, other questions? Is the applicant present, any comments they'd like to make?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, County Commissioners, my name's Harold Phelps, 1270 North Winchester, Alath, Kansas. I am representing Tesco Investments today, Scott Cooper. Scott is here with me as well. This is kind of a sticky issue, but, you know, I think, I think staff and the Township Zoning Board is looking, looking at this as a development. This is not really a development. This is exact, using the property exactly as it has been used since 1972. We're not asking for any new driveways, we're not asking for any additional utilities, extensions, any of those things. This house has existed on this property since 1972 as it exists today. So, as, as was pointed out, there has been a transfer of ownership through a sheriff's deed which actually created, you know, the, the issue to begin with because of a mortgage failure. But because of that, we don't meet all the conditions as set forth in the zoning regulations, and that's really what we're struggling with. As you all know, or a number of you know, you know, in almost 40 years of my experience in, in this board and coming before this board, I have never brought to you an item like this that, "an illegal lot split," quote unquote, asking for a variance or waivers requirements to make this work. In my experience, though, sitting in this room, there have been several, and, and, and watching those cases, the options are few. There are very few options when you have that illegal lot split and it's transferred multiple property owners, and in this case, several building permits have been issued, so it has been accepted as an acceptable use in its location. So with that, we're happy to go back to the Township Zoning Board, review this case, continue to work with staff, continue to work with the adjacent property owner and see what we can work out. With that, I'd be happy.
Let me ask you this, you said the property has been used for several years?
This property, this house was built in 1972.
And it, so how did they access the property?
Exactly as shown on, on the drawing in front of you. It's always been.
I have a question.
Okay, all right.
I have a question.
You're very talented, Mr. Phelps, but.
Mr. Chair.
I think it's going to take some work to come up with, with something that, that can work, I'll put it that way. Mr. Schaefer?
Driveway, you, you state there is an easement on adjacent property, is that a legal easement to that?
It is.
There is a documented legal easement for that driveway at that location?
That's correct.
Okay. With, with, that's with the current owner or a previous owner of the adjacent property?
Okay, so, if you want me to go through some history, I'd be happy to do that, but, but the, this was an original, original 80-acre tract, and Mrs. Johnson owned the property originally, and she deeded 20 acres to her son, which is immediately to the east, which is the track that is, the second arrows that are pointing to the east, so there's a 20-acre tract there. The son owned that property. Mom continued to own the 60 acres. And she went and got a reverse mortgage on her house. Well, if any of you have gone to try to get a mortgage in the county, typically the mortgage companies, the cap feds, the local mortgage companies will not finance on acreage properties. Typically, they want you to reduce it down to a three or 10-acre tract, something like that, and that's what they did in this case. So in that case, what she did was she got a mortgage on this three-acre tract. Well, she, whatever, whatever the case, went through a foreclosure process, and, and the sheriff actually sold the three acres. So she kept the remaining property, she has since deceased, and she had signed a quit claim deed to the remainder of that property to her son. So her son now owns the remainder, the 20 acres and the remainder 57 acres, not the three acres. So what's happened now is we've ended up with an island, but when, but when she signed, when she basically did the, the legal description and the quit claim deed for the three-acre tract, she got from her son the driveway easement, which clips the corner of his property, and wrote an easement on the remainder of her property for access for this three-acre tract. So therefore, the property has access, the same access that she has enjoyed since 1972. The reality is, with the three-acre tract, to build a public street back to here doesn't make any sense. That's a, that's a $400,000 to $500,000 proposition, which is more than the house is worth. The house is a nice house, the house is a $250,000, $300,000 house, which Scott would like to put another $100,000 in it and make it a $400,000 to $500,000 house. The, the, the alternative, when Scott met with the legal staff, was, well, you know, really, there's nothing you can do, or regs don't allow it, so you just have to tear the house down. Well, that's not a real legitimate option either. Obviously, there's a significant investment. Scott's only mistake was, he invested, or I shouldn't say invested, but he participated in the investment of Johnson County, where he, along the road, had an investment in the property as a mortgage holder. So what I didn't tell you, so, there were some other deals, so after the sheriff's deed, a friend of, of the neighboring property bought the property with the intent to sell it back to the original property owner. But he got a mortgage from Mr. Cooper, and then he failed to pay, so Mr. Cooper actually took the property back indeed in lieu of foreclosure, so that's how he acquired the property. So in the meantime, we've got a piece of property that has access, we're not asking for any additional development. There are two houses on this 80 acres, there have been two houses on this property since 1986. No utility extensions, no additional fire protection, no, none of those emergency services that are kind of spelled out that we, you know, we try to mitigate with new development. These are existing, existing houses, and we're just trying to figure out a way to make them work.
Well, Jay and Harold, let me ask you this. If, if those easements are in place and have been in place for this extended driveway, and will continue to be in place, why is, why is this issue before us?
The, Commissioner, the, because the, our subdivision regulations require a private street to be constructed to that home, it has to have that frontage, and so the, as the, that, that evening when that was presented to the zoning board, they, they didn't even have an opportunity really to discuss other alternatives. There was, there was additional discussion between the surrounding property owner and Mr. Cooper, and so that, that, there was considerable discussion about that, but it was a fairly quick recommendation for denial without, kind of looking at some other alternatives.
What I'm thinking about is the future, in other words, a, a subsequent property owner to the north of this property?
Top north, yes.
Would be bound by that easement, or that certainly would impact the, the ability to sell that property, I would think.
Yes, I believe it would too, and.
Well, I guess my point, it seems to me that whatever happens in the future with the property to the north, there's going to have to be some agreement between the property in question and the larger property owner, or that larger property is not going to be able to be developed.
Right, that is correct, sir.
So I guess, I'm, I'm coming back to my, why do we interject at this point when in fact there are real-life factors that are going to impact any future decision in regards? In other words, leave it like it is, because it's been there for 20 years or however long, and, you know, whenever the property wants to develop, then the property owners are going to have to work through something.
True up.
Chairman. Am I making sense, or is it just nonsense?
Yeah, yes, you are, Commissioner, or, Mr. Chairman, and I don't know the answer to that question, that's kind of speaking on behalf of the zoning board, except that there's, there's a lot of factors here to, to look at, and it will require something very creative to look at with someone, obviously some legal minds.
Well, I don't have a problem with going back to the zoning board, they got a big job to figure this one out, I think.
Mr. Klicka? This issue really concerns me, because having a, having a property owner totally isolated here, it just doesn't make sense. So at some point, we're going to have to weigh in, and I think as you go back to the zoning board, I, it, I'm like the other commissioners here, get creative, get this thing figured out, because otherwise it's going to have long-term impact here, and, and we're going to be forced into making a decision somebody's not going to like. Because again, I don't see how in our right mind we can, we can allow where that existing home that's been there since 72 become isolated. So, good luck.
All right. Mr. Phelps, thank you very much. Are there other questions? Anyone else who would like to address this item? All right, Mr. Brown, you have a motion?
Just one quick comment, as I said on a previous applicant, application item that we've considered, another one-off scenario brought to you by the Big Six. Okay. I move to remand application.
We can count on that.
Number NW-PP/FP-3434 back to the Northwest Consolidated Zoning Board at the applicant's request to give the applicant additional time to consider its options, and for the zoning board to reconsider its, Consolidated Zoning Board meeting is scheduled for December 17th, 2018, scheduled Johnson at 7:00 PM in Room 200, Johnson County Administration Building, 111 South Cherry Street, Alath, Kansas.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to remand this item back to the zoning board for additional consideration. Any questions or comments? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye, motion carried. Next item.
Item number 16, resolution number 092-18, application numbers SE-PRB3-3420, AU, and SE-PDP-FDP-3421, consider request from Royal Services applicant and Tom G. Shriver, trust landowner for rezoning from PRB-2 Planned Residential Neighborhood Retail Business District to PRB-3 Planned Urban Neighborhood Retail Business District, and for a preliminary and final development plan for construction of an office building on a 3.8-acre site located at 19175 Medcalf Avenue.
Jay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jay Leipzig. This item, 19175 Medcalf Avenue, is for an expansion of Royal Services for their expansion of their business from Planned Residential Neighborhood to a Planned Urban Neighborhood Retail Business District, and this item went before the Southeast Consolidated Zoning Board on October 16th, 2018. That body recommended unanimous approval of this item. Staff is also recommending approval, and there are two, two infrastructure waivers, and a waiver from the street construction, storm drainage standards for this, this particular application. I was just going to note that the, that the existing building will match the, or excuse me, the proposed building, the new one will match the existing building in, in style and appearance.
Okay, questions of the staff? Anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? If not, back for the commission, Mr. Klicka?
I move to adopt resolution number 092-18 approving PRB-3 Planned Urban Neighborhood Retail Business District zoning, the associated preliminary and final development plan to allow the construction of an office building to minimum infrastructure waivers and a waiver from the street construction and storm drainage standards for the reasons and subjects, subject to the stipulations set forth within the resolution.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolution and the applications as noted. Any further comments or questions? There being.
My items go easier than the Sixth District.
Don't get carried away over there.
Sometimes, sometimes.
Sometimes.
All right, the motion is made and seconded, it's before us, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye, motion carried. Next item.
Item number 17, application number NW-PP-FP-3435LE, consider a request from Chogo Cottrell, applicant landowner for a preliminary and final plat for a replat of one residential lot to be known as Hoskins Lake Estates 2, located at 30765 West 127th Street on 10 acres zoned RUR Rural District.
Jay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is my last item. The, this item for Chogo Cottrell of 127th Street went before the Northwest Consolidated Zoning Board on October 15th, 2018. That body recommended unanimous approval of this item. Staff is also recommending approval. This is a replat for, for a one-lot subdivision. It currently has an existing shared driveway, which after further review and some, looking at some visibility and some distance analysis, we have, there's been some issues with that, so we're proposing a location for a new single drive that is consistent with our new regulations that were just adopted a couple of weeks ago, and so this is really kind of a cleanup item of those, the, some, the, the previous, the shared driveway.
Okay. Has come to us with positive recommendation from the zoning board and staff?
Yes, that is correct, sir.
All right.
Do we get reassurance from Commissioner Brown on this?
I'm prepared to make the motion, does that count?
All right. Is the applicant present, any comments the applicant or anyone else would like to make in regards to this item? There being none, Mr. Brown, the motion is in order.
Thank you, Chairman. I move to approve a preliminary and final plat for a replat of one residential lot to be known as Hoskins Lake Estates 2, located at 30765 West 127th Street for the reasons and subject to the stipulations set forth by the zoning board.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded in regards to the application as recommended by zoning board and staff for approval. The motion is to approve. Any further comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Have a happy Thanksgiving, Jay.
Busy day.
Next item.
Please note, the board is sitting as the governing board of Fire District Number Two for item number 18. Consider approving the November 2018 payables for Fire District Number Two.
We are sitting as the fire board. Chief?
Chief Jim Francis, Fire District Number Two, here to address any questions you may have regarding the payables dating from October 19th through November 15th, totaling $164,762.12.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I would note, I did sign documents this morning, which, with new banking services, which will allow us to...
Move beyond this.
Move beyond the frequent requirement to sign paychecks. Is that right? Susan, you're here?
Yes.
Not in your head, yes. And that will be effective when?
January 1st.
Pardon?
January 1st.
January 1st, so we have some time to go.
We've been working hard with DFM staff to work out all the fine details on this over the last few weeks, so we're, we're nearly there.
Very good.
Great.
Very good. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I do not need to ask you about the 12 cents to explain that any further.
The what?
The 12 cents at the end of that tabulation.
Oh, well, if you need 12 cents, I think I can cover that. Mr. Klicka?
I move to approve the payables for November 2018 as shown in the check register from October 19th through the November 15th, 2018.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the payroll payments as noted. Any, any comments or questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Mr. Chairman, I... About the 12 cents? I, I was just going to commend the chief for his diligence on this effort, the transition. I know it's taking time, but you get good reports, and I appreciate your work.
Thank you. It, there's been a lot of work to do, but it's been a learning experience, I think, for everybody involved. And we're nearly there, so I think another month or two, we'll be there.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Are there any other items?
No, sir.
All right, that concludes our action agenda. Moving to reports and communications.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a comment before the chief leaves, I, I realize that it could come from items from commissioners, but seeing that you're walking out, I've, I've met with a number of folks from Spring Hill, and I want to compliment you on securing and getting that contract done as quick as you have. And I understand that'll be coming before us here very shortly.
Correct.
But I did get a lot of compliments, and they said they've never negotiated a contract as quick as they did this time around.
That would be an accurate statement.
Congratulations, chief.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Postocelli Ferguson?
Chairman and commissioners, I have two items to highlight. One's in the packet, and one is to highlight an event from this past weekend and to give some thank yous to some staff that are in the room. The first item is a correction on a public hearing date for the Star Bonds at Olathe, 151st Street, related, the old mall site. And the corrected date for the public hearing is December 18th, 2018. And there's information in your packet, we've talked about that before, but the main thing there is the corrected date. The second item is the Veterans Day celebration that we had this past weekend, and I want to thank the chairman and the commissioners that were there, and the majority of the commissioners were there. And hundreds of people braved the cold weather this weekend for Johnson County's 32nd Veterans Day event, and it was held at Antioch Park. So, I've got a few thank yous, and we do have Gerald Hay and Penny Pearson in the room. And I'd like to first thank the two of them. Gerald Hay is, is the heart and soul of this event and has been for a number of years. And this year was extra special. He worked with the Defense Department to provide almost 500 Johnson County Vietnam veterans with a lapel pin and certificate of recognition for their service. And the event would not have happened without Penny Pearson and the logistics leading up to the event, the many hours that both of them, and energy that both of them put into that to get those 500 certificates ready. And both of them reached out to a number of community organizations that were partners in putting this event on. And their passion showed through this event. I do want to highlight a few more thank yous and then go back to those two. There, Lana in our office then also helped back up Penny. And then, on that day, we had Eric Schultz and Nicole Blackwell, Keith Davenport, that were from the Public Information Office, that were putting out a lot of social media. And it was cold, so some couldn't make it, and they put a lot of information out there for those that couldn't make it, and there's still information on our website for that. I'd like to thank the chairman for a speaker and, and leading us in this cold weather. And again, the commissioners that were there, as well as the Parks Department. I think this was an idea between Commissioner Klicka and the park staff to open up the facility and kind of had the idea last minute, and they pulled it off. And it was nice to see the director, Jill Geller, and Jeff Stewart, deputy director, and Rhonda Pollard, one of their superintendents, actually were there themselves, serving the coffee, because they wanted to be interacting with the veterans and, and honoring them and the community event. And just seeing the various departments come together to pull it off and have a nice warm place for the veterans to take a break, and some coffee and some, some goodies, as well as other organizations that help provide that. So, with that, I would like to say a special kudos and thank you to Gerald Hay and Penny Pearson, and please stand and be recognized. Thank you. I would assume that Gerald probably does not want to speak, but if you, would you like to say a few words? Okay. Well, thank you for your service. And with that, that's all that I have. Chairman.
Okay. Well, again, let me reemphasize, Gerald always does a great job with this project every year. And Penny, thank you very much for your help. And I want to say a special thank you to the speakers, Senator Moran, Colonel Murdock, and Jimmy Spencer, as well as Ms. Bullock, who gave the invocation and the, and the benediction. I won't say which one, but one of those individuals continued to lean over to me and say, "I can't feel my toes anymore." So, it was, it was a rather chilly day, but there was, I thought, an extraordinary attendance at this event, even though the weather was not conducive. So, thanks to all the veterans who were honored that day. Anything else?
Nothing further. I would request a quick photo op for Gerald and Penny, and they probably will not like me for doing this, but with, with you all, just in special recognition to record this.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Turning to commission comments, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chairman. I have several. Following up on the manager's comments about Veterans Day and, and the ceremony, it simply just couldn't have been more well-done, although Gerald, you could have picked a little bit warmer day, I gotta say. But I will tell you, on a side note, I stood there with, I don't know, several hundred people. I don't know, I never heard anybody with a count, and I didn't count it up, but it was a lot. It was a lot of people.
There were what, 400 chairs placed?
Oh, wow.
And every chair was full, and a lot of people were standing.
The parks folks, I think estimated somewhere over 500, 500 and over 550.
Wow.
That sounds right.
Amazing.
So, I stood there on the sidewalk with Sheriff Hayden and some of my fellow commissioners, and while I was standing there, it was occurring to me that I no longer could feel my toes, and that I was cold. And then, I looked down and I saw the chairman and Senator Moran sitting still, not able to move around in the shade. And I felt, I felt bad for them sitting down there. But I will tell you, for a moment, it creeped into my mind, I'm freezing cold, I gotta, I gotta do something to warm up. And then, I thought about the veterans that were around me, and those that didn't get to come home on their two feet, how cold they must have been in Korea, and in the theaters in, in Europe during World War I and World War II, and how hot and wet they must have been in Vietnam, and in other, other places such as Afghanistan and Iraq. And suddenly, I didn't care about being cold anymore. I was just proud to be an American, standing with all of those now estimated at 550 other, generally Johnson Countyans, but more importantly, Americans, to be standing there and sharing that moment with them. And I wanted to say thank you to the chairman. I thought he did an excellent job, and I thought Senator Moran's comments, just, he, he hit a home run. He did a great job, too. And again, thank you to Gerald and staff that put that event on. I understand the work and effort that goes into those. There's, that's no small task, and it is, in fact, it's a monumental task. And speaking of monuments, my second item, Gold Star Memorial, Gold Star Family Memorial. I've been working on that with Gerald, and I, I say, "I've been working," I'm going to take a liberty and say, "I've been working." Gerald's been working, I've been trying to plug in and help him where I can in getting a memorial established for the state of Kansas. We have a site location in Olathe at Harrison and Old 56 Highway at Naval Air Park. You may recall years and years and years ago, jets being on the corner, those have been since moved to New Century, but long ago, there were actually naval jets on the corner. The Gold Star Memorial, I have started a GoFundMe page to raise money for that. I will also say that Gerald raised money at the event on Veterans Day, and I don't recall the number that he said we raised, but it was, it was at least several hundred dollars. And I informed him that I have about $3,000 in additional commitments, some in checks and some in, I just haven't had time to go pick them up. But the expense of that is about $37,000, if I recall right, in that ballpark. So, we've got a long way to go, there's a lot of money to raise, but Gerald and I are getting ready to turn the heat up, so get ready. And then, when it comes to the components that it takes to put the memorial in place, there, there's more there than slabs that, that get brought in in black granite with etched pictures and names on them. There has to be footings and engineering and excavation and sidewalks and lighting. And I am happy to report that I have all of the ancillary items donated. It's done. So, we are still raising money to put the actual memorial together, the, the granite piece, but I have gone and secured the items, be, in terms of services, labor, or supply. And all those items have been, have been secured and are in place. They are ready for us to call and let them know when we're ready to go. Moving on, election canvas today at 4 o'clock at the election office on Kansas City Road for find out how things really turned out. And I want to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I'm proud of our county, I'm, I'm proud of my state, and I'm proud of my country, and I look forward to spending time, being proud of my family, and spending time with them on Thursday. Thank you.
Ms. Osterhaus?
I will echo the comments about Veterans Day. As always, Gerald, you put together a great, you and staff put together a great show, and I, I always, I'm always appreciative out there. It was nice to be a wind block this year with Commissioner Brown. We were used by several citizens as wind blocks.
Including me.
Including some of the commissioners. Just a quick update from our market quality forum, you know, we're leading the way again in air quality for the region. And now, there's a lot of factors that go into that, especially where we're located and which way the winds are blowing, but always nice to know that we're not only the healthiest county, but we've got the best air quality as well. So, that's all I have, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Allen?
I also would echo the comments on Veterans Day, a very well put-together event. And the article that Gerald wrote on Mr. Nixon, best of time, someone I'd known personally for a long time, was excellent and received a lot of positive comments on that. Yesterday, I attended a Commission on Aging meeting, and they may be aware of, they're having problems with volunteers specifically for meal delivery over the holidays. Some of their drivers are, are not in town, and they're asking for substitutes, so if anyone's interested to deliver meals on wheels over the holiday, they can call 913-715-8859, or send an email to hs/volunteer@joco.gov.org. And those meals on wheels are very important to those individuals. Frankly, it's their only contact in a lot of cases with somebody that day. So, they do need some temporary drivers if anyone's interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ashcraft?
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and thank Gerald and Penny, they're sitting back there quietly, and I think the photograph is a good idea, Ms. Postocelli Ferguson.
Ms. Klicka?
Echo all the comments about veterans ceremony. It was one of the neatest events I've attended as a commissioner, and I, I expressed the commission's and Gerald's and staff's appreciation to the Parks Board yesterday for, for them stepping up and helping Gerald and his team deal with the folks there. I did make a, as you know, I made the comment relative to Chief Francis and the Spring Hill contract for Fire Department for commissioners. If, if you don't, aren't aware of it, that has been a hot topic for probably the last four or five years. And in some cases, it's taken over two years or more to try to get a, an agreement settled with Spring Hill. So, I, I, Chief definitely deserves a hand on that one, and, but I also have to say, City of Spring Hill did advise me, they kind of broke some of their traditions and protocols in order to move this thing through very quick, and I appreciate that very much. And to all of you, a happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Schaefer?
Thank you. A couple, a couple of events I want to share with, with our citizens. Last Thursday, I'm sorry, last Friday lunch, Penny and Mr. Chair and myself attended the KCADC Luncheon, Kansas City Area Development Council, a meeting with about 2,000 of our closest business friends in, in the community. The highlight of the event was, of course, Doris Kearns Goodwin spoke. She's a product supplies winner, and they call the nation's historian, so she spoke highly of the, of her newest book, of course, and we all received one, and were able to bring it home. And she spoke about the four presidents that she really appreciates and how they expressed their leadership as they became presidents of the United States. Also, Tuesday lunch, two days ago, I had a chance to go to the Lee Wood Chamber of Commerce luncheon, and the highlight of that particular program was President Bob Kendrick spoke. He is the president of the Negro Baseball League Museum, and spoke highly of, of that location and the future plans of that particular building on 18th Street. But most importantly, today, the 15th, is my first granddaughter's first year old today, so I'm, we're going to celebrate with her the rest of the afternoon, okay? So, we're very happy that she made it through this first year, and looking for a good future for her. Thank you.
Thank you. There will be no agenda review today, so, because of Thanksgiving next week on Thursday, and our subsequent meeting will be the 29th, so all items will be on the action agenda. And county offices will be closed on Thursday, November 22nd, and Friday, the 23rd, for the Thanksgiving holiday. And a reminder that we do have vote canvas today at 4:00 PM at the election office, so all of those who were in, on that canvas board yesterday will need to be there at 4:00 PM today. We do have a spatial public building commission meeting, which we will adjourn to as soon as our system is up. So, we are adjourned from the, excuse me, Mr. Allen.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just want to note that last meeting in November, and I don't know, Mike, if you're attending, there's a two-day final wrap-up on that task force for transportation, so I'll be missing that Thursday meeting.
And I will be in attendance at that also.
And I understand you're coming up with all the answers, and that...
Yeah.
I'll be out in the plan.
Or there will be a report, we'll put it that way. Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you both for your participation in that task force. So, we are adjourned from a regular business session, and we'll come back in a couple of minutes for the PBC meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sure. Did you put... Oh, sure. Vote him out. 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 Vote him out.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gerald. Great job.
I'm going to see some license.
It's up for us.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I could, but I don't have any problems here.
Nope.
Just want to get surveys and everything else. That's a weird deal, but.
I mean, I could, but I don't have any problems here.
Nope.
Just want to get surveys and everything else.
That's a weird deal, but.
You're signing checks?
Yeah.
That's what we're talking, both of us have to sign it.
Oh, is that it?
It's old school.
It is.
We don't even have an auto pin, huh?
Yep.
I'm not laughing at you.
Yeah.
Although I am laughing.
Hey, shit.
But not personally, just, yeah, it is old school.
Take your time, because I'm next.
Yeah.
At this time, we'll call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for the purpose of our Spatial Public Building Commission agenda. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Clicka.
Here.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
And Chairman Ilert.
Here. All are present. We do have a quorum. The first item is minutes of November 8 meeting. And do, are there any additions or corrections that need to be noted? If not, do I hear a motion to approve? Second. Motions made in second to approve the minutes as presented. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Item number two.
Request for proposal, RFP 2017-075, Consider Authorizing the Construction Manager as Constructor CMC Guaranteed Maximum Price GMP Contract Amendment with McCarthy Building Companies Incorporated for the new medical examiner facility in an amount of $16,407,091 for a total contract amount not to exceed $16,477,091.
Mr. Reinhardt.
Good morning, Chairman Ilert and Commissioners. I'm Brad Reinhardt with Johnson County Facilities. Two weeks ago, we shared with you during a committee the whole presentation of the completed design of the county's new medical examiner facility, and we're at a point where we're ready to begin construction upon approval of this contract amendment. A quick review, in December of 2016, the PBC authorized this project along with the courthouse project. A contract with PJV Architects was approved in September of 2017, and then the PBC authorized the sale of bonds in August of this year to fund this project and the new courthouse and the subsequent demolition of the current courthouse. McCarthy Building Companies has been a key contributor during the design phase of this project. They were engaged throughout the process. They brought relevant and direct experience in constructing complex science and technology projects, including forensic science facilities such as our new medical examiner facility. They continually evaluated construction costs and leveraged their relationships with trade partners to gather innovative ideas to save costs and maximize value for the project. I do have some new information to share with you. I know a couple weeks ago, Commissioner Brown had asked some questions around the, the unit costs and construction costs associated, and PGAV, together with Smith, Smith Group, JJR, pulled together some information on some recent medical examiner corner facility projects that are in progress or have recently completed. So I'll just take you through this here. The, the gold bar at the top is the construction cost per square foot of the medical examiner facility for Johnson County, and it comes in right around 500 square feet, or $500 per square foot. And then the next grouping in the white there of five, those are medical examiner corner facilities that have been constructed or under construction currently, and they range in cost, construction cost from $564 per square foot on the high end to $447 per square foot on the low end. This includes a medical examiner facility in Ohio, Texas, state of New Mexico, the Douglas County one there is in Oregon, I believe, and then Hennepin County in Minnesota. So our $500 cost is right in the middle of the range of these example projects. And so with that, I would be happy to answer any additional questions. We do have a representative from McCarthy Building Groups here, as well as our project manager, Janice Phillips, and so we'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions? All right. Is there anyone present who would like to address the PBC on this item? There's no one to be heard. It's back before the commission. Do I hear a motion? Mr. Clicka.
I move to authorize construction manager as constructor guaranteed maximum price GMP contract amendment with McCarthy Building Companies, Inc. for the new medical examiner facility in an amount of $16,407,091 for a total contract amount not to exceed $16,477,091.
Second. Motions made in second to approve the RFP as recommended with the contractor, McCarthy Building Companies. Any further questions or comments? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Reinhardt, with the exception of the Douglas County facility, those other facilities seem to be substantially larger. I mean, one of them is seven times larger. How does that affect the, well, I mean, how do we compare our facility with theirs and then use a price comparison? I mean, is that, is that a realistic comparison, given the, the size of those facilities?
I think it's a realistic on a certain level. Now, we, you know, you could dive into this a little bit deeper and look at the allocation of administrative space versus laboratory space, or the refrigeration space and other functions that might be going on in the building to, to compare those proportions to our project. But I think it's, it's a good representative, that there's a lot of technology involved or a lot of infrastructure involved with these facilities, the mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems. And it's just, you know, it, with, this is kind of a high-level look at representative facilities, so, you know, you'd have to do a deeper dive into the allocation of function within each of those square footages to glean more out of it. Thank you.
I have a question.
Any other questions? Mr. Schaefer.
As I recollect, last week, we, when we discussed this issue, that what we're discussing today, there was a comment made that this number does not include any, any provision for artwork in this particular project. Is that still?
Correct. There is no provision, no budget, no plans for a public art project for this facility.
I'm trying to, number one, I'm trying to recall when we let that happen. I want to visit with someone regarding when and, when and how that happened.
A year ago.
About a year ago, as I recollect. I'm going to support the motion, but I'm kind of trying, I'm going to be trying in the future to find some way to get some art back in here. We discussed many moons ago, many days ago, about how we would incorporate our art into the building.
Design.
If we approved this building with, without art incorporated into it, I have questions about how that's going to be obtained, other than by an artwork and placing it on the wall. And that is a concern of mine, and I don't know how to pursue that, or how we could get around that to maybe add some budget in the future to this particular project to allow this to occur. But I will support this motion, but I am concerned about the lack of artwork in this particular project.
Well, I don't know that there would be a lack of artwork. I think the decision was 1% for art in this structure would be somewhere around $200,000. And I think that's the, that's the option that was rejected and taken out of this project. So for individual paintings, or whatever you want to call it, in, in the structure itself.
Understand.
Was not necessarily excluded.
Yep. That's my recollection. That's correct. Yep. Well, is there, does this include money for artwork or not?
No.
That's my question.
We don't have a line item specifically for artwork. Now, we do have, you know, furniture, fixtures, and equipment.
Well, I understand that.
Budget for that, and, you know, could.
It does not include the 1% for public art.
Correct.
It does not.
Yep. Mr. Brown.
As I recall, in that conversation, that the discussion and, and the rationale, the decision point, as I recall, was that this is largely a secure facility. It is not a, similar to the courthouse or this building where people generally come and go. This is a, there is much happening at that facility, but it's not a place people are going to come through in a public building and hang out. This is, there's serious business that's occurring there, and I recall that being a rationale, at least in my mind, for the decision, and I recall that being a discussion point. Thank you.
Any other, any other questions? All right. The motion is before us. Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Are there any other items?
No, sir.
Okay. That concludes our agenda, and we are adjourned from the PBC meeting. Everybody have a nice Thanksgiving. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.